Yeah. Artificial.
I was gonna say.
But you know, I always decorate. I'm hiding behind my blocks.
Well, the artificial looks so.
It's out of the window.
It looks so great. It says Happy St. Patrick's Day. And see, I have my little St. Patrick's Day.
No, no, I get it.
My niece sent me a cartoon of a bunch of those little guys.
We took a chat board, didn't we?
Yep. Math equations. And it said it was a.
No, no more.
Hello.
You should do that.
Ryan not coming today?
I need a.
Apparently not.
John, how are you?
Yes, please talk to us.
Me. I like the red one.
No, not. I did it a couple times. Because Brian couldn't come, I didn't. I can't help you. He has a lot of big list of notes here. Yeah. It's hard to follow.
Yes.
I heard him tell you last week, it was very simple if you just follow this. I do believe I heard that. And I heard your comment back.
Morning, Mr. Ed.
How are you?
Good.
How are you? Good.
It's difficult.
Yes.
Especially when I don't have a cell phone, you know, I have no idea how to navigate these things.
Oh, you're kidding? Wow.
A lot of caveman in my head.
I still wouldn't have a cell phone.
If you guys please stand.
Praise for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. They just don't know. All right, go ahead. You wanna start, please? We have our replies.
Yes, I've got it. Or you wanna wait for a moment?
She's on her way. That's okay. No, we want to go ahead and start.
Board of Commissioners moves to approve the mark 22 regular meeting minutes.
Second roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes, Vicky? Yes. All right.
Water Resources, John.
Yes, sir.
John, come on in here.
Morning, sir.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought it's done out there.
Hi, just morning, sir.
Good.
You? I'm fantastic.
Good.
Go ahead and start, John.
You got a couple items there.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to that, John?
No.
Who's that, the Britfield Company?
So, it's pretty much a Maple Crest development.
It's developed.
Here, seventy-six, yes. So, the streets are in that sort of extension of a street for industrial projects.
Yeah.
In the Myers National Store essentially.
Yeah, maybe I should share a couple of things with you.
Board of Commissioners moves to enter a resolution, general sewer water agreement for sanitary sewer and water improvements. Maple Crest Industrial Sewer and Water Expansion Project, Portage County Water Resources Department, project number BR-221220P.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes. Hey, John, do you have anything on the next one with CT Consultants?
No, it's a project we've had on our mind about just the time it's overdue and needs to move forward, and we're finally going to.
Board of Commissioners moves to authorize an interim agreement with CT Consultants for Portage County Water Resources Department and Portage County Regional Sewer District and the Portage County Streetsboro Sanitary Sewer District number four.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Have a good day.
Sweet, right, John?
You like it?
There's someone who's calling, sweetie. Morning, Janet.
I like this sign. Yeah. I'm hiding behind it. Hands? Very nice. I just gotta make sure I don't start intruding over here.
She's starting to take over.
Encroaching, encroaching.
Look, this is the middle of this.
I have the crack right there.
All right. I have one discussion item, and I just wanted to give you an update on where we are with the Water Resources Director applications and new receiveds and so forth. I just wanted to give everybody an update on it.
Okay.
As of yesterday, we actually received seven applications.
Ooh.
And the seven resumes only deleted, if you remember. Some people don't always pull out application, they just submit the resume. And actually, out of those seven applications, I do feel at least two, two of them possibly could be there. So, I'll work with Michelle and everything, and then, you know, see if that's agree. But yeah, we received seven.
That's pretty.
Looks pretty good. And they meet the qualifications?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they do. And then, one more thing with, we would actually like to post a job on LinkedIn, but they have a strict process to follow. You actually can post one job free at a time. However, part of the LinkedIn is you have to have a personal profile set up as well as you have ten connections. And then, the page has to be four days old, then you get a company page in order to post. So, we checked into it, and we thought perhaps that might help us get more, like, the feelers out there, you know, holding high-level positions. But there is a process to follow, and I don't know how the board feels about HR having a Portage County page out there to post a job at that time or whatever one of those.
So, you said a personal.
Personal profile.
And that personal profile can be the department, not a person? Or do you have to put?
It has to be a person, because we actually tried. We tried putting Portage County Human Resources as the person, but for some reason, obviously, the system must know. I don't know. It has to be a person. So, Heather actually just set it up using her name at first, just to kind of initiate the process, but it has gone nowhere. It's still in her name. She is waiting to see how, you know, the kind of how the board feels about us proceeding with that. If you don't want us to proceed with LinkedIn, then we need to see.
What does your HR group feel about LinkedIn?
I could check with them. I do need to tell them to post LinkedIn.
Yeah, because I've seen job postings on there, and I actually get a lot of information out there. That's why I just wondered what, how the other HR, because I know you belong to the HR club.
Maybe.
See, and then we report back, because, I mean.
Pretty cool.
My daughter just got contacted for a job just because of a profile on LinkedIn, and she just took part-time job as a counselor.
Yeah.
But they sought her out.
That's like, it's great exposure. Yeah.
Yeah, it is. And that's what we were thinking.
So, you could, you start, start with a personal profile, one of the people here, and then after a period of time, it switches over to a.
The company, yeah.
Company?
You have to have ten, at least ten connections, so which means that personal profile has to send out at least ten connections to ten different people. The invitations have to be accepted. And then you have to wait twenty-four hours after the invitations are accepted. And then the page, the personal profile, has to be four days old before they allow you to create a company page.
Does the personal profile then go away?
It's still connected to that personal profile, but that way Heather can go in there and review, you know, our company, kind of, page. Right now, it's just sitting in Heather's name. It's not going anywhere, so if we choose not to proceed, then she's simply just deactivated.
That would be interesting to get other counties, your peers.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're always good.
I do know some of them use it, but yeah, I'll get one back. Absolutely.
That's good.
That was pretty much it. I know I did have a question about recruiting firms.
Yes.
So, I have information on that, unless you wanna wait and see.
I'd like to hear that.
I actually checked with three consulting firms. The fee, the fee's based on, it would be the first year salary of the person. And they can range anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent of the purse. So, just say for example, we're paying, we would pay the person a hundred thousand dollars. Your license.
Thirty, forty thousand?
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's look at our two back. Then we'll revisit. And LinkedIn back. Yes.
Yeah, it's a little pricey, so that's why I like.
Maybe LinkedIn will hook us up.
I'm talking to these individuals, like, you know, I'll get back to you. Yes, it's a little pricey, but at least I'm gonna give you nothing.
No, that's good. That's good to know, though. I knew it wasn't cheap, but I had no idea.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a little pricey. Yeah, it's a little. That, that was it, then. Okay.
In accordance with section 305.30, the Highway Revise Code, this Board's Resolution 21-0396, Part Nine, Board of Commissioners acknowledges and approves the county administrative to approve, approve the adversary step increase for the following non-bargained employee. Lee Benson, Technology Division Manager of Water Resources, effective February 26, 2020.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes.
Board moves to accept the resignation of Tina Jackson, Eligibility Specialist, Portage County Jobs and Family Services, effective March 7, 2022.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes.
Board moves to authorize a three-day internal posting for eligibility specialists vacated by the.
Lenita.
Lenita Jackson, Portage County Jobs and Family Services, with the internal, external posting, if no internal appointments made.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes.
Board moves to accept the retirement of Susan Kishden, Child Support Specialist, Portage County Jobs and Family Services, effective February 7, 2022.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes.
Board moves to authorize a three-day internal posting for Child Service Specialist, Specialist Vacated by Susan. Child Support, Child Support Specialist Vacated by Susan Kishden, Portage County Jobs and Family Services, with external posting, if no internal appointment is made.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes.
Board moves to have resolution modifying the execution of the memorandum of understanding clarifying the pre-disciplinary process to be followed by the bargaining unit employees for Portage County Jobs and Family Services.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes. All right, thanks, Janet.
Still have about fifteen names we have to read.
Okay, next to Jobs and Family Services.
Good morning, everyone.
Good afternoon. I don't know if you need explanation, because they were going to discuss.
Board moves to enter amendment number one between Portage County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Portage County Jobs and Family Services and Emerald Transportation, provide transportation services.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes.
Board moves to increase the care's stipend for Portage County Jobs and Family Services managers assigned to after-hours care shift.
Second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Vicky? Yes. And you know what, Sue, I had to ask Kelly Doan, if she could give us an idea of how much that fluctuates, and I know it's not all the time of the increase of how, how much it's gonna increase as far as how often that happens.
It'll, it's, it's every, every weeknight and then every weekend.
Oh, okay.
There's gotta be someone on call every night, so there's, there's always, it has to be a supervisor on call.
Oh.
Supervisory duty.
Okay. Okay.
Yes. So, the, the low end one is increasing fifteen dollars for the evening night, and then the high end for the weekends is increasing around twenty-five.
From fifteen and seventy-nine. Okay.
Yes, for the whole day.
Yes, for the whole day.
Okay. Oh, you answered that. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Joe is on. Are you cold, Joe?
All right, the discussion, which one is the question?
Number one.
Number one. All right, so this is for the four vehicle requests for the undercover, um, for these cars.
Yeah.
I just need to know, um, A, if we're funding them, and B, do we wanna fund them through their current budget? With the, knowing that they may have to come back to them here for money, or supplement them, using general fund money, or use sales tax money?
So, what is your recommendation for us?
Um.
As the budget?
I mean, we can do, so, we can do, we can do all three of them easily. It's just more of, I just don't know what you guys are wanting to do, like, how? Do you want to make them stick to their budget? Do you want to see this as an additional request?
Well, here's, here's my thing. How do we rein in additional requests, now barely two months into the year? It seems like, why do we do a budget if every month, we're gonna allow certain departments or people? I mean, it makes it hard to stay within a budget, but now I understand, certain things come up, you know, and it's out of their control or whatever. So, that's my question to you, because I know before, Tony had always said, he would like to put a rule that unless it was an emergency, you could not even come back to the board for additional funding for six months, because first of all, they have the money in their budget now to, they could do this. And, and here's the thing, even though they have a budget, there's downtime, if people leave and stuff, so it may wash out in the end. So, I guess I'm trying to understand, what is your take on how you feel that you would like to see this, because?
Before I let you answer that, my concern is, is we took an action a few weeks ago that I think disrupted the budget of the Sheriff's Department. And we said, they said, hey, we wanna lease these five pickup trucks. We said, no, buy, we, we will buy those five pickups. We and they, they would have, if they wanted to buy them, they would have said, we wanna buy them. They said lease, we said no buy, and that, those five pickup trucks disrupted the thought process, I believe, of the budget.
No, not, no, because we made this decision, he looked into that, and that was gonna save us, I think, how much to buy. To buy them?
And I thought it was coming out of the sales and use, the sales tax fund, not out of the general fund. And that's, that was my interpretation of what we did, not, it was, it wasn't, you're absolutely correct. That was a savings to do that, and for vehicles aren't. But we said, we would buy those, and I believed it was gonna be out of the sales and usage tax versus they had to take that out of their budget. That, that was my interpretation of that conversation.
Let's be clear, it did come out of their budget, or are we paid for?
So, what did, so many questions, for fifty thousand dollars, this is my interpretation, for fifty thousand dollars, um, back in, when we, I do the budget, and we did, we did budget meetings back in November, October. I was wondering your question, that was for the twelve cars, the twelve crewed cars, and to seek to offset their own fund money. I took the two fifty from the general fund money and put it into the sales and use tax money.
Now, you did what? You took?
I put the, I took money away from general fund.
Okay.
To twenty-fifty, general fund budget, and moved it over to the sales and use tax money, the sales and use tax budget for the twelve cars.
We should not be putting money in there that's not sales and use tax. That's only for that, because there, there's a big misunderstanding, and especially on the sheriff's behalf, of what that sales and use tax fund is for. First of all, the sales and use tax money, it is to service, it was to add on to the current jail with some renovations, but it is for the entire criminal justice system, okay? The sheriff got his piece of the pie out of it. It also covers the coroner's office, courts, prosecutors, probation, public defenders, anything that increased the caseloads due to the epidemic. So, that's where I struggle with, and we shouldn't only use it for one-time spending, because that money, once it's gone, it's gone.
You just said epidemic. That sales use tax money was way before the epidemic ever started. That was.
No, we're talking about.
The drug epidemic.
Yeah, the drug epidemic.
And do we have plans? It sat there not doing anything, idle for two years now, or whenever the jail was finished. Is, do we have a plan to do that, or in my mind?
Well, that's what we're discussing now, because there's confusion as to what that money, that money is not specific to any department.
Agreed.
And we would need, because, again, it's because we come under budget for the cost of the construction, that we have that, that money. But I can tell you, there's a roof out there that was not done, and it was not added as part of the, the construction. There is a parking apron that was not done, because I guess at the time, I just found this out, the contractor did not wanna take on the roof, because it's harder to do an old roof, and I guess especially this roof that they're talking about, nor did he wanna include the parking apron. But back in the day, they had received a quote for the parking apron, which is still bad out there, if you've been out there, of like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Now, that's probably two years ago, so there's still stuff that needs to be completed, and Vicky may be able to add more. But the whole purpose of the sales and use tax committee was because the tax we had to pay specifically allowed it to go into the general funds with basically no restrictions in, in order to convince the voters that we were gonna do the right thing, and Vicky, you might, you were here.
Well, that's, that's true, but the two fifty that you put in there needs to be taken out.
Yeah.
We don't add to that.
Okay.
I didn't realize we had done that.
Yeah, because I, because I lose, I lose twelve equipment, twelve obtained equipment, and the five purchased cars, they're all one-time use.
Okay, so the five cars, they paid for, or we paid for? That's just what, what I want.
We always pay for them.
Oh, right, but I mean, did it come from their budget, the five cars?
It came from their budget in the, in the sales and use tax.
And understand, the sales and use tax.
So, if that's not what we wanted to do, I can fix that.
The sales and use tax.
Go back. I'm so confused, and we, we've, we've had this conversation, but what you just said, I'm unaware that, hey, you can't put money into the sales use tax. That, that is just there. That's an entity all by itself.
Just for those times.
We can't put that in there, so we did, follow the money. We said we were gonna get those cars, the five vehicles, and we took that out of their budget.
So, I just want to share, we're all, we're all thinking, so when I say put money in sales and use tax, I, I just put budget in sales and use tax. I didn't physically put money, like.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't put money from general fund and into the sales and use tax.
Okay.
Oh, I thought this was a setup.
No, I put the, I put, yeah, I just put the budget, the budget. I decreased the budget in general fund, and I increased the budget in sales and use tax.
You didn't move money there?
No.
Oh.
I just moved the budget.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was like, yeah, I did not do that.
But, but the whole purpose of the sales and use tax was not only to build that pod that was desperately needed, but it was also for diversion programs, to keep people out of jail. We do, you know, and that's why we funded, you know, school counselors, we funded SCRM experiences, anything to keep that population out, which in return, you know, if we're gonna start really wanting to get that money cleared out, which I think we should, we need to contact, like, the probation department. They have taken on tremendous amount of cases, and those are the kind of departments that we need to see if there's actual equipment or anything like that, because that keeps people out of jail. We want diversion programs, not necessarily, you know, just spending it, because obviously cruisers and, and cars are not diversion programs, and nor are they renovations or add-ons to, to the jail. So, in my mind, sticking with the promise we made, that's what we need to look at.
You know, I think the question on the floor, though, is still, did that come out of their budget? Did it come out of their budget, or did we pay for those five trucks?
It came out, it came out of their overall budget.
Okay.
It came out of the overall budget. The funding of those trucks is sales and use tax.
Okay, see, I thought that we were going to take that off, and, you know, I don't know. I think we need to check the minutes, because I don't know what.
Okay. Yeah, because I thought we were, irregardless, we funded. I mean.
Oh, yeah, I understand that.
We, we funded, and as far as decisions on leasing, renting, that has always sort of ultimately ended up back with us, because we're the ones that pays it. And when I have a budget finance guy saying, hey, instead of leasing five supervisor cars, it's gonna save us, what, a hundred-and-fifty thousand a year or something? We're on that route.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, we don't have a service. Maybe now we have a nice carryover, but we have a nice carryover, because we have lots and lots of projects that need to be done, that have not been done, so. So, back to your question.
My question is.
Let's circle back.
How do we, how do we wanna fund the, um, the board of, uh, these cars?
Okay.
We can make them stick to their budget, um, knowing that they may have to come back to them here for additional money?
Which is normal anyways, because I can tell you, and it was not a strategic plan that they have to come back. That's a twenty-four-seven operations. We do not control emergencies in this county, nor do we control disasters or pandemics or epidemics. That is a typical protocol for that department, because of the nature of that department. And so, it, so when I hear people say, well, that's not a good way to budget, they obviously did not understand how that budgeting went, because it was never set up to short them, ever. We gave them a budget that we thought they could stick to, understanding that a lot of times, like, in years, but I can tell you, the last couple of years, Don stayed within his budget. We did not have to fund him any extras. So, I mean, and again, sometimes what, the reason we don't, like we're doing now, every other week, seems like they're coming back to the well, you know. There, there's times when they have downtimes or they're short of staff, so they have extra money in certain lines, and, you know, as you know, only certain lines, they can move around. Other lines, they cannot, so that's, that's the logic sort of behind that. But, I mean, I don't, what do you, I mean, like I said, you're the, our budget guy, what, what, how do you think we should handle it? Because we should all be on the same page, and, and then have that be a message that gets conveyed across the board, not just to the Sheriff's Department.
Um, I think sticks in the budget and having come back, that's my recommendation.
And you will assist them in moving money where money can be moved to assist them.
Yeah, but at the same point in time, you're gonna meet with them quarterly, is my understanding. So, it's not like we're gonna get to October, November, and not know that they're drastically short money. We, we're gonna know, because, correct, I mean, that was my understanding, they're gonna meet quarterly, we're gonna meet quarterly with them, so we understand their budget. Because again, some areas, they, they can't control. Other areas, they can't.
So, my hearing, same with the budget they have, their responsibility is using the forty-nine-nine to get those four used vehicles out of the budget they have.
Yeah. You're going to assist them with how to move that around, and if they come up short, then we, we know it, though.
In our quarterly meetings, they can express wherever they're short, and we will come to the board on their behalf and say, we, we wanna move this money, are we all in agreement?
Yeah, and that's normally where Joe would come to us and say, on their behalf, hey, I met with the sheriff, this is my recommendation, they can move this, or even if they move this, we're still gonna be short, we need to put more funds in.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think, honestly, I think they would be agreeable to that. They just wanna make sure that down the road, they don't run out of money.
So, yeah.
So, the resolution that we've had five weeks ago, and we've talked about last four weeks, is Joanne gonna be able to bring that up, so we can?
Depends on if we have all the information. It's not that it's been delayed for any reason other than lack of information.
Can you assist Joanne in, in which correct funds, so that we can bring that up again?
Are we gonna wait another week? Because that's, that's, we're at six weeks of getting these vehicles. The dealership has held these, actually bent over backwards to
But again.
Do a good deal with that.
I understand that.
So do I, and I understand, just like I said last week, handshake, and we thought we were gonna do it, they thought they could pay for it, and now we're talking about moving funds, so they can do that. But to allow those vehicles that they don't have, because that dealership has done a stellar job trying to hold those vehicles for them, even under adverse conditions that the Sheriff's Department has rendered themselves in now, I, I, I don't wanna see this put off for another week, or two weeks, or three weeks, and because it's been six weeks that we've been trying to do that.
Well, we shouldn't, I mean, well, I guess, Joe, you can come back to us today. We'll be here, maybe check with Joanne, make sure we're all on the same page, and then if we need to pass some, or we don't have to do anything, right?
We do need a resolution of necessity passed, so if Joe, you can get with Joanne to update the resolution appropriately, and then bring it back. This is just saying, yeah, we're all in agreement, we're gonna make, we are allowing the purchase.
Is someone from the Sheriff's Office coming in tonight?
No.
Well, it says it is here.
They gave you, gave us a new agenda. Larry pulled himself off the agenda. There is a new, new agenda. I, I reason I know that is I asked him to.
Okay.
Okay, so is that clear, then? You're gonna get with Joanne to see if you have anything?
Yes, so we're prepared, we're prepared, how do we hear your question?
Yes, sticking to the money that's in the budget, to be able to move funds, as you advise them to do, and we get the resolution this morning, so we can move on with this.
And they can do that without having to come back to the board, correct?
So, um.
We just need the resolution of necessity. That's all we need.
Correct, we need a resolution of necessity, and then we will work with them, with the understanding that their budget may come short, and then we will work with them. We will come to the board on their behalf.
Yes. That's it.
Fair enough.
Um, the additional fuel use tax fund, I think they kind of already trust that.
Yeah.
My, my question is, if we've had it for two years, and I agree with you, the diversion that you have, how come it's still sitting there? Because there are so many needs that everybody believes that we have for it, how come nobody has used that, that is within that realm of participants that can do that?
I would say to that, why do you think we have a twenty-one million dollar carryover? Because nothing has been done for the last two years because of the pandemic, and so, everything was, like, on hold. So, with that being said, now everyone is like, they wanted stuff done two years ago, and all you gotta do is ask Joanne, because she's got stuff coming through that's like almost a two-year backlog.
I see that one, yes.
So, so to answer that, again, we've been talking about certain things, like the roof on Riddle Block, the parking lot, and, and again, we, we agreed to do it. the parking lot, and, and again, we, we agreed to do it last year.
Well, and they, and they're getting there, the contracts are finally starting to move down the slug river.
Yeah.
But, I'm, we're talk, I'm talking about that 1.5 million that, that you've set multiple amounts to for diversion, of whether it's the courts, or it's probation, or if it's schools, or-
Well, I think we need to revisit it, because, I mean, I don't know how many people i- in the criminal justice system understand that there's still funding there, that, and, and who I always think of after listening to Hank and Judge Lemon, is the probation, because, you know, they've really increased their caseloads to keep people out of the jail, or they go to jail, they get sentenced, and then they come out and they're on trans, or whatever. So perhaps, we need to revisit with the entire criminal justice system to see if there are now needs, or, like drug testing kits, you know, that keeps them out. We, we normally just take it from our fund, and how many times, Vicki, do they come to us and say, hey, we need more money for test, drug tests? I mean, you've had it numerous times already. So, I think-
So we should be using money from sales and use tax, or, I think they, Hank needs more drug kits, or they, whatever, or-
Anything to keep them, yeah, it's sort of like diversion.
And everybody likes it, but usually I get most diversion is after I get myself arrested, and then I have Judge Doherty's court or someplace else. I have that ability, we have the ability to help them down that path.
One of the most successful things, and I, I don't know if Vicki will agree with this, I think that we did, was we funded those school counselors. Remember how they would come in and give tests and things?
That was successful, it was.
And, and you know, I'm surprised we haven't heard back from mental health and recovery work. But again, I think it's, people don't realize that there was this much-
For younger kids, I think that's true, but I do think Tony's got a point there. Sometimes, people have to be incarcerated to shake them up, to say, okay, now we need to get into recovery, and so sometimes the jail does come first. I mean, I don't like it, but-
Yeah, but then we also have, have to have, um, programs where after they come out, you know, to, to stop the recidivism. So maybe what we need to do is regroup and think, you know, first of all, take a look internally at the, our criminal justice system, and, and that includes, like, the coroner, because, you know, the coroner was majorly hit, and we don't, they don't give us a lot to ask. Coroner, the, the courts, the prosecutor, probation, public defender, those all fall under, as well, the sheriff, but the sheriff's pretty much, their piece of that pie was the jail renovation. I mean, adding that pot on, and then renovating that, so, um, but, and then the next thing we're gonna talk about is maintenance for the, the sheriff, and I'm assuming that's for the doors, Michelle, is that?
Couple different things on that, yeah, but doors included, yes. How we want to maintain them. Do you, who do you want responsibility to call upon? With our understanding and, and discussions, that there should have been a maintenance agreement in place already? It's not, or it ran out. I don't have the actual facts on that. What I do know is we do, we do not currently have one. It would probably be in the best interest of the county, including the sheriff's department, if we continue to have internal services oversee the contract. But, the sheriff should be the person, sheriff or anyone who wants a name, should be the person that has the, um, ability to make direct contact. What I mean by that is, if, if, let's say the doors are broken, right? They should not have to call Joanne or Shannon before they can contact the poly jail door, I think that's who we're talking to. It should be direct contact.
And they're calling Shannon at 2:00 AM in the morning. That was approved two or three years ago.
And, and, and that's what I said.
So, we're, we're working on it.
I, I, I recall, there was a, I got like a three-year contract, because we had such problems with the doors, and the problem we had with the old doors is, they were so old, they couldn't get parts, so then we had staff out there trying to jury rig and get the doors to work, but then we were told, we couldn't get any more parts, it's gonna be part of the renovation, and then, here we are again, but when the renovation came, we went with a totally different door company, and we were supposed to have a service contract slash maintenance agreement on the doors, and they were also supposed to come out for like an annual inspection once a year to make sure the doors were still functioning, or, you know, working like they were supposed to.
Well, that's why I think it'd be in best interest of the county, including the sheriff's department and internal services as well, to have, um, oversight, to be able to organize that contract, so that the sheriff's department doesn't have to worry about, okay, we're in year two, we need to start another inspection, or bid process, or whatever it may be, keep that down in internal services. They will oversee the contract, but the sheriff will have the ability to make direct contact-
Oh, yes.
-with this, uh, jail service agreement. Currently, we don't have one in place. Whatever happened, I, I don't know, I don't know, but we need to fix this, so that they have one in place, and they have the ability to make direct contact, and that's very important.
This has been such an issue. I, I don't understand how we don't have one in place. See, we approved something, and then I, you should never assume, because you, we all know what that does to you, but we assume it's done. And I know this has come up, maybe it even came up at the end of last year, I don't know, but I, I didn't know.
Yeah, I think there was more problems.
So the doors that you're talking about, is it replacing those doors, or the contract is-
No, no, this is, as you know, at 2:00 in the morning.
I'm talking poly doors that you, you, to-
Right, no, no.
So it's them breaking down and not being fixed?
Well, them breaking down and having the ability to make that call to this, through the agree, agreement, with poly jail door, allowing the sheriff's staff, corrections, to make that call, in lieu of contacting Shannon or Joanne.
And putting a buffer, a middle person.
It really removes a middle person. Now, this contract could go directly through the sheriff, but I do think it's a good idea to maintain it through regional services.
Shouldn't the contract just note who the contacting body is? I mean, we've got it, Joanne's gonna keep track of it, so they don't have to worry about two years, three years, four years.
And she would keep the funding for it.
But they know that a representative from the sheriff's department's gonna call you when it's broke.
That's correct.
And you, you circumstan-
Because the last thing we want is, we do not want maintenance, nor do we want any of the sheriff's department staff, any county employees operating on those doors.
That's right.
Yeah, because that's what we had before, and we had someone out there with paper cuts.
Uniques, unique. They did what they put at the time, what they have, but I think it's in best, in best interest. And we'll just, you know, move forward, let's go with this role. We really just wanted to confirm, what does the board want? Do you want the contract with the jail, do you want the contract with internal services?
The contract should be with internal services, with representatives of the jail assigned to that, that they can make calls to the doors, wherever the main service provider, under there. So we don't have to have two or three people touch it before it gets a person that can fix it.
That's right, and we're gonna make a clear guideline that it will be in internal services, um, the management of the contract, and then, um, we'll go from there.
Because we pay for the bills for the maintenance of the jail.
Oh, yes.
The major, major.
Because it's one of our facilities.
With the, the envelope of the billing.
Yeah, absolutely.
You got it, yep, you got it.
Now, are we gonna hire a maintenance person that is just for the jail?
So that has been discussed.
That was what was approved.
That is correct.
A long time ago.
It has not been done yet, so we-
Did your guys find the resolution?
So they're looking for the date that that was approved. I do not know the date, but I, I know that it had been approved in the past.
It was like a year before, though.
Oh, yeah. I said right around, you know, I don't know, three, four years ago. But, they are looking into, to getting me that resolution, when I'm waiting for it, to see where the department sits on that, sheriff's department. My understanding is they have not filled that position. So, we have a new sheriff in office, let's meet with the new sheriff, and let's say, hey, this is available to you, what say you?
But I have a question, who would have posted it, because it has never come before us, for a job description posting?
I believe they did. I believe the sheriff's department, under Sheriff Doak, posted it, but it was never filled. For one reason or another, I don't know that reasoning, but I do know, right?
I was like, they have a tough time with the end there, so.
I think so. So, um, but I, I don't want to place blame on anybody in particular. What I do know is a new sheriff was not in at that time, who's in now, let's revisit this and say, do you want this position? What say you?
That sounds good.
And then we remove the funding over appropriately, once the position is filled.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sound good?
Okay.
You went for journal interest?
Um, the first one, the first one is, um, Janet.
You know what, for the then and now, is there the 2.3 million? Why is it so large?
It's because, um, the GDC bill of $2 million was in there, and-
The what was up?
The GDC.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that's going to ring, oh, that's $2 million. Because we had a placement like back in January, and we approved it.
So you're gonna add detention centers?
Yes.
Is that our share coming from where?
That's our share coming from general fund.
Okay. Did we pay, what, 70% of that? Jaga pays 30% for?
Something like that.
Yeah.
There's a split.
Yeah, okay.
And we are having meetings with departments when they announce. Some of our departments have a larger volume, and we are meeting with them to get some things figured out.
All right, thank you.
In accordance with Section 305.30 K of the Ohio Revised Code, this board's Resolution 21-0396, and this board's Resolution 21-0878, the board of commissioners acknowledges and approves the county administrators to approve the director, to direct the auditor's office to pay and process the March 3rd, 2022, bills, ACH payments, wires, journal vouchers, and then annals as applicable and contingent upon verification of the reports as presented by the county auditor, reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Rocco, Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes. Board moves to process March 3rd, 2022, budget amendments as reviewed and recommended by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Rocco?
I just want to say something before, um, just so you guys are aware, for general fund amendment, $9,000 from Narda's office is because the quote that we, um, if you've already approved the lease measures back in November, one went up to, um, $48,000, Narda's 7, and we appropriated $40,000 in there, so that's just-
So that's just the difference.
Just to me, correct.
We're just making you aware that there was an increase in the initiative.
And then we're talking more, um, bringing recognition with this.
Second for that? We didn't prove that.
Yes, yeah, okay, Rocco? Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Board moves to create Fund 4256, new Milford and Tellme Road resurfacing.
Second. Rocco? Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes. Board moves cash advance from Fund 5200, PCS, general administration, to Fund 5324, manaway plant headworks improvement.
Second. Rocco? Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Thank you, Jo.
Thank you.
If you can get that before we leave? That resolution with Joanne?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. County Administrator, board moves in accordance with Ohio Revised Co- Code 121.22G1, the board of commissioners moves into executive session to consider employment of a public employee.
Second. Rocco? Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes. Is Janet going to be in here?
Um, we don't necessarily need Janet to come in, but she can if she wants, I, I-
I thought we were given, having her come in for all GM lines, let's hope we see.
Okay.
Can I have Jen?
I don't care.
Okay. We're going into executive session, so.
Okay, fortagers, we are now going into executive session, and as soon as the executive session is completed, we will return to the chambers. Don't go too far, we'll be right back.
So you're talking to the camera, right?
You just moved it.
I'm talking to Forte, I'm talking to Fortage County.